Welcome to the October Regular Board of Education Meeting. The mission statement for the district is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's Like verification of the meeting notice, please?
Yes, it was posted on the Lake Mills Area School District website, at the Lake Mills Post Office, and submitted to the Lake Mills Leader.
Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting then to order. I would like you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
(Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we please have a roll call?
John Delaney, here.
Amy Litcher, here.
Andrew Palmer, here.
David Radel.
Robert DiPerio, here.
Okay, are there any revisions to the agenda? Hearing none, I would ask for its approval.
I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda's approved. The first item on the agenda is to welcome our appointed board member, Mr. Palmer. Welcome to the board. We appreciate very much your public service and look forward to you sharing your observations and experiences with us as we move forward.
It's an honor to be here. It's an honor to be selected by the board. There was quite a candidate pool, so again, I thank you for your consideration. Maybe not appropriate, but a word to the public that this is a work environment, and we have to respect all of those who do work here. It is not your home. You're free to do what you do in your home and manage that appropriately, but we do have to make considerations for others in the workplace. And again, thank you, Mr. DiPerio, and to the rest of you, I appreciate it.
Okay. And we now have a student board member, and I don't think that we've been introduced.
I don't think I've been introduced either.[164.12][164.12](Laughter). Welcome to Bella Mendoza. Bella, we are going to do the oath of office with you, but before we do that, do you want to do that oath first and have her then tell a little bit about herself? Okay, let's start with the oath, and then we will have you tell us and the rest of the public a little bit about yourself.
Okay, awesome.
All right, so Megan, do you want her to stand?
(Inaudible). And then I gave her the paper, so go ahead. I, Isabella Mendoza, having been elected or appointed to the office of Lake Mills High School Student Board Member, but have not yet entered upon the duties thereof, swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Do, okay, so why don't you tell the board a little bit about yourself?
All right, so my name is Bella Mendoza. I'm a senior here at Lake Mills High School. I've been going to school in the district since I was in fifth grade, moved from Thurberings, Alaska, actually, so quite a big difference. As of right now, I'm involved in extracurriculars such as Lane Crew. I'm also the president of my class in student council, and I'm also a part-time worker at American Eagle, and I was chosen as their my AE in-store influencer. So I've done a lot of marketing on my social media platforms, and I've been very involved in their business as well, so that's very exciting for my life now and after high school. I have loved going to school here, and I've had a lot of great connections with a lot of my teachers and a lot of the students here, so I'm just very thankful to have this opportunity to voice my opinion and speak on behalf of the students, so.
Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And do you have a report to present this evening?
Yes, I, based kind of on my conversations with other students and, you know, speaking with my staffs, I go to my first block, which is AP Government and Politics, and then I actually do the rest of my classes virtually, which includes a full-block study hall. I also do a strength training, and I also do AP Spanish through JDI, and I also am taking creative writing. So, based on my experiences, it's been great both ways, both virtual and in-person. I feel very safe in my classrooms, and I feel like all my students are taking it very responsibly, too, so I feel very comfortable in school, and I've had a lot of great communication with all of my teachers. They've been really, done a really great job at communicating, and they're very understanding because I do, I've had communication with other students that it is a very mentally challenging time, and especially for teenagers, that can be, take a big toll on your life. So, it has been very challenging. I feel as if people are kind of just trying to get through it right now, kind of doing, you know, the best they can, and it's a challenge for all of us for different reasons, so I think we're just kind of all trying to kind of get through it, and obviously everyone's situations are different, so I can't speak on behalf of every single person's situation, but I feel as of right now, we're all just trying to do our best, and I think the staff is doing a great job with both of their in-person and virtual students, so.
Well, thank you, Bella, and we hope that you find this experience rewarding as we go along and move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Administrative reports, Ms. Brocker.
Well, first of all, I don't think it's fair to follow up Bella because I don't have as exciting of a report as Bella has, so, well, maybe next time it'll be better, but as you know, October is a busy month in finalizing the budget. We have received our third Friday enrollment data, and I attached that for the board. And just to clarify, we calculate in like three main categories. It's students who are residents of our district but may go elsewhere under the open enrollment program, or like we're part of a co-op with Johnson Creek that's called a CAP program at the high school, so there's that column. Then there's the students who are physically enrolled in our district under the open enrollment program, so they're not our residents, but we are providing their education, so I have that in a column. And then the third column is the students who are our residents who are going to school here. So, for different calculations, I need to know the three different columns, so that's why I'm sharing that information with you, too. So when we do the revenue limit calculation, we look at residents, so it's our residents attending our district and our residents attending schools outside of our district. So those are the two columns, but I just wanted you to understand there's the purposes for the three different columns of information. We also have our equalized value finalized, and our valuation is going up 10%, which is very positive. I also shared with you our summer school enrollment, which is part of our calculation for our revenue limit, and last year we were at 22. I mean, other years when we haven't had the all-virtual summer school, we were in the 70s to 80 number FTE, and this year because of it being all virtual, we knew our numbers would be much lower, and just wanted to share with you that it's 22. And then I also, so then these next two weeks, we'll be wrapping up our budget, and I'll be sharing that with you at our meeting in two weeks for us to finalize. The other piece I wanted to share about is starting today is National School Lunch Week, and I shared with you the proclamation that we received from the Department of Public Instruction. I just wanted you to be aware that we're celebrating National School Lunch Week, and our food service staff have done, have gone above and beyond to provide meals for our virtual students as well as our students attending here, so we just really appreciate their work, and it's nice to be able to acknowledge them under this situation.
Any questions for Ms. Brocker? Okay, Dr. Olson?
All right, so first of all, I'd like to just give an update on the strategic planning proposal. So the first part of that includes the development of a community-wide survey. There's been a group of us that have met with school perception several times to review and revise the questions. They do have a set of questions, obviously looking for the fact that there wouldn't be bias in those questions or leading type of questions, so we will have one more meeting where we review the final set. That will go out to community members right after the election, and that window will stay open throughout November. That survey will be distributed electronically. We'll be sending everybody a postcard as a reminder with the information on there. There will be paper copies available at the district office if somebody would prefer to do it by paper instead. The survey is completely anonymous, however, it does allow us to disaggregate the data by whether you had kids in school, if you didn't have kids in school, if you were a staff member. It even allows us to disaggregate the data by which school your child attends and which grade level, so that way, we'd like to use that information to lead into the strategic planning that will occur in January as a baseline, because our goal for the strategic planning session is to have a community-wide cross-section of people, about 50 people, but I think the community-wide climate survey will help us hear all of the voices and allows input to people that wouldn't necessarily be on that strategic planning committee. It also provides us some nice baselines so that if we did do a follow-up community survey, we'd have that information. The other nice piece about doing this with school perceptions is because they do so many community-wide surveys, they will actually compare our results with communities approximately the same size as us to see if, you know, the questions are higher or lower than normal, because you, as you take surveys, you always get those results where, you know, there's always questions that are low, but how low is low? Is it lower than normal, or, you know, or is it something we should be concerned about? So, we're looking at approving a contract with Joe Schrader through OSAW to facilitate the strategic planning process, and so he would start out with a SWOT analysis, looking at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and really, we're really seeking that community input to help us guide the next five years. The goal is that that strategic plan would take effect July 1st of 2021, get that in place, and as I've talked with Wendy, because usually strategic plans have a budget implication, that will help us look five years down the road and really plan accordingly for this. So one thing that we've also discussed was the fact that we have been offering virtual learning and in-person learning, and contrary to popular belief, virtual learning is going pretty well in the district, and I know there are a lot of parents that are really advocating heavily for that, so part of our strategic planning may look at the fact, is there an element of virtual learning that is implemented in the district? And we stay with that, especially at the high school level where you can see that it is a nice flexibility for students, especially in their junior, senior year, also helps prepare them for college where they will most likely have to take at least one of their classes, if not more, online. Number two, I have the update on staffing shortages due to COVID-19. If you've been reading the paper, you've seen, one of the main reasons that school districts have had to shift the virtual learning is the fact that we have staff shortages. Now, it's hard enough in a normal year because we never, the state of Wisconsin does not have enough substitute teachers. In the past, when I was younger, you had a lot of people going into education, the job market was rich, and you had a lot of teachers that were new graduates that either didn't get a teaching position and were really doing a lot of subbing to get their foot in the door. We don't see that anymore. It's really, it's hard to fill the normal teaching positions that we have, much less have any type of surplus. So what we see for our substitute teachers are mostly retired teachers or people that do have a bachelor's or associate's degree that we are getting a license for to be a short-term sub. With that, because the COVID symptoms mirror the flu-like symptoms, people are overly cautious, and we expect them to be overly cautious, and so you do see a higher rate of absences, and if you haven't seen, the flu season has already hit us, because we do have some people that have already been pretty sick with flu symptoms. Anyway, we've also had to have a couple of quarantines due to staff members being close contacts, whether it's in school or close contacts outside of school, so then that also, you know, adds to the shortage. But, even though we've been short teachers almost daily, our administrators have been subbing, we've had other people cover classes, I mean, people have really been, really just kind of pitching in to keep schools open, so we have really been doing everything in our power to make the school day run. As of Wednesday, we have several teachers that are out on quarantine back in school, so as of Wednesday, we are fully staffed. We are not short right now, and I say that right now because it could change at any second, but we will keep looking at that. That will be one of the major indicators for us as far as a potential school closure is the ability to staff safely. We do need licensed people in the classrooms. Three, the revision of the reopening plan, there's a lot in that. We put the draft of the pandemic plan, so because the reopening plan was written in July, and I think everybody in the state of Wisconsin was trying to write a reopening plan with the information that we had at the time, things have definitely changed. The more we learn, we've definitely changed after the first two quarantines that we've had to go through. We've learned how to be contact tracers ourselves in the school district. Tony Zastro has done a wonderful job working around the clock to assist us with that. However, we did need to update that plan, so instead of calling it a reopening plan, now shifted it to a pandemic plan, and how do we react in a pandemic, and what steps do we need to take? We also added quite a bit of clarification as far as, you know, if you're a parent, how will you be notified if you are, if your child is a close contact? What do I do if I am positive, you know, what does that mean for my child in school? We also added language about how we are quarantining at the middle school and the elementary. We are quarantining a class or a cohort as a whole, so that entire class along with their teacher shifts into virtual learning. That also, part of that has to do with a staffing issue. If I've got to quarantine a teacher and half the class, I don't have another teacher for 14 days that can come in and teach that class. So the goal of having a robust virtual learning platform was to easily shift, which we just had one teacher with her cohort shift over the weekend and made that transition. We're up and ready to go this morning at 8:00. At the high school, it's a little different story. We've got quite a few more high school students that are participating in virtual classes, so every block looks a little different. We've got kids coming and going. We are really trying our hardest to keep the teachers six feet away from the students behind Plexiglas. It's eight, we're better able to socially distance the high schoolers because there's a lot fewer of them in the classrooms, unlike middle school and elementary where we are averaging about 18 in a classroom. It's very hard to say that your one student wasn't six feet away from another student when they're taking off their masks during lunch and eating and drinking for a 20-minute period. To be on the safe side, we are just moving that whole cohort. So far, we've been, I think, fairly successful with the plan. We have not had spread through the district, we've not had a lot of positive cases. The positive cases we've seen have actually come from outside of the school district with the exception of one. And with that, we'll be sending out some parent communication. I know people are watching the district dashboard, COVID dashboard. I just want to say that we have tried to update that daily, but that is Megan, myself, and Tony. Tony is a 30-hour-a-week employee, and with being the only nurse in the district right now, she does have her hands full tending to sick kids, and so we are, we are tracking all the quarantines. This includes students that are quarantined by their parents because the parent might be tested positive, and so by the time you compile all of that information, to update that daily is almost an impossible task if you want accurate information. So after looking at many school districts' dashboards and talking to others, I'd say the majority of school districts, especially our size, only update that once a week, so we're going to be moving to that. However, what I'm going to add to that once-a-week update is an explanation, so that people understand, okay, we've, you know, like for example, we've quarantined, you know, cohort at the middle school, this is why, or we've had some outside cases, positive cases, this is why. We've got teachers out, they're not positive, they're close contacts. So just giving a little bit more information without releasing any personally identifiable, you know, medical information, which we of course cannot release. So letting parents, you know, know as much information as humanly possible. And lastly, I think the biggest piece of tonight is the schedule change. Say, walking through the schools, talking to teachers, and walking through their daily plan, teaching in-person and teaching virtually full-time is really like teaching two full-time jobs. I have a daughter who is a second-grade teacher, she only teaches virtually. My daughter, who just teaches virtually, teaches from 8:00 in the morning and probably wraps up at 8:00 at night by the time she responds, grades, things like that. That's only teaching one platform. Our teachers are teaching both platforms, and I think when you are a professional and you're working around the clock and you still feel like you're drowning or not doing your best work, that's a hard place to be in. So, after talking with administration, talking with the teachers, looking at other districts' plans, we made a commitment to come back to five days a week while a lot of other districts had either the Wednesday off or the Friday off as far as being able to respond virtually to parents and to teachers, or to students. We're just finding that this plan we have right now is unsustainable, and probably can only be solved in one of two ways. Either we hire additional staff to take on just the virtual learning, which we do not have budget monies for, and even if we wanted to do that, there are not teachers out there to hire, or three, we need to give teachers more time to be able to do their jobs effectively and hopefully respond to something like we heard this morning, this afternoon before the start of the board meeting. If there are kids that are still in need of help or parents that we need to reach out to, the teachers need to have time to do that, and they simply do not have time during the day. Their planned time is taken up right now recording the virtual lessons for the virtual platform. They are taking time grading after school where normally a lot of that work could have been done during the school day. So, we are proposing an early release on Fridays. There'll be an end time on Fridays, starting with the high school at noon, the middle school 12:10, the elementary 12:20, and that will provide approximately three hours of work time for teachers on Friday to be able to record lessons, to be able to respond to students virtually, to be able to complete the grading and the planning. However, I do know the burden that that puts on parents of elementary school children. That weighs on me very strongly, so we have been working feverishly with the rec program to be able to provide a rec program from 12:30 to 3:15 for those parents of students in grades K-5 that are going to need that support. The rec program will be coming out with additional information. We're going to start out tomorrow, though, with a survey, just to be able to gauge approximately how many students we are thinking that we are going to need to support because that, on top of that, then I need to be able to staff that, and we'll be staffed with our parents who would normally, would be working those hours anyway. We also need to look at spacing needs to go along with that. So, that is my very lengthy report.
Questions for Dr. Olson?
The one question I had, I'm not sure if it's at the time to do it when we motion. For the afternoon, or that came up from a specific parent, the afternoon Friday rec program that will be offered, will that be only for the families that already participate in the, it would be open to anybody?
That's a great question. So, we already have an after-school program through the rec department, so that we're kind of keeping somewhat separate. We are assuming that the students that are in the after-school program will need that care from 12:30 on, and then they'll just continue into their normal times that they get picked up. So this one is for basically the new people that are not already participating in the after-school program.
What about the older kids, like middle school, freshman high school? I'm only in note, like homework helpers, I mean, is there any options of using that afternoon time educationally? I'm just thinking. I don't know.
We can definitely work with the rec program, you know, as we get feedback from the survey to see if there are opportunities for that. It's one of the reasons we are going up through fifth grade, because typically sixth graders babysit littler kids, so we assumed that they would be able to be able to, you know, ride the bus or go home. I mean, obviously, there's extenuating circumstances, we can look at that on an individual basis. So the one piece that I do need to still work with Steve Considine on are the athletic practices and to determine if they're still going to occur at their normal Friday night time, or if we would move things up. If, I don't really want to move practices up too much if it's a teacher that's a coach, because the goal is that they're actually being provided work time, but we need, that's the one piece that we need to work through. But by announcing this early, because the first Friday that this would take, you know, be in effect would be the second Friday in November, that gives us enough time to plan and work through some of those scenarios accordingly. We just need to get some numbers first to see what we're dealing with, but yes, thanks. That'd be a great idea.
And the end of the school year, kind of looking at this for?
We are. Yeah, and so, I mean, real honestly, part of my parent communication, you know, tomorrow is, along with this, Fridays, we have five Fridays from the start of this until Christmas break. I mean, I'm also cautioning parents, have a backup plan. I mean, while we, our goal is to stay in-person, illnesses are increasing, they're increasing statewide all around us. We do see the data. I think we need to be realistic that there may be a time period here where we might have to shift virtually. A regular flu season is bad enough trying to find subs, but if we add COVID on top of this, it's going to be very difficult.
Okay, moving on. Dr. Olson, is there anyone registered for public comment?
No.
Okay. Moving then to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes a number of items. The approval of the September 14th Regular Board of Education Meeting Minutes, approval of the September 14th Finance Committee Proceedings, approval of the September 14th Board of Education Work Session Proceedings, approval of the September 28th, 2020 Special Board of Education Meeting Minutes, the approval of vouchers and invoices, the approval of the Treasurers Report, approval of Personnel Report, and I would ask at this point, is there anyone who wishes to take any of those items off and place them on the regular agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, questions? Hearing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
John Delaney?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
Robert DiPerio?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0. Moving to the action items, the first item is the approval of the LCAT pandemic plan. Dr. Olson gave a bit of a summary of that during her report. Is there anything you'd care to add to that, Dr. Olson?
No, just for frame of reference, I did add- No, just for frame of reference, I did add, and it's at the, it's out there for the public too, a line item highlight of the major revisions to the plan that will be sent to parents as well so you don't have to read through both documents and try to figure out what has changed.
Okay, so then I would entertain a motion for its approval.
Can I have a question, ask a question?
After we have the motion.
Okay.
I move the board approve the LCAT pandemic plan as presented.
Second?
I second the motion.
Okay, no questions?
Oh, what was my main question? I think you answered it before. Okay. Yep.
Okay.
Oh, I know what, I did have another one. If there's any changes to the plan, rather than sending this document out, how will you let people, parents know that there's been some adjustment? Will there be a revision posted and some notification that this section has been revised? I guess just so people feel kind of?
Right. I mean, I, my, you know, I think it was one thing with the July document because we didn't have kids in school. I would prefer not to revise anything without any board action except after spelling or, you know, kind of grammatical mistakes. But I did try to really think through the major scenarios in there and a lot of the issues and questions that came up. So I will not take the liberty of revising the document moving forward.
Bring it to you first.
Without approval, right.
Got it, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the Joe Schroeder Consulting Contract. And again, Dr. Olson summarized this during her report. I would entertain a motion to approve that contract.
I move the board approve the proposal with Joe Schroeder Consulting in the amount of $9,000 plus expenses for the district's strategic planning initiative.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments?
Just a comment. I do believe as a new board member that it is, is critical that we develop a strategic plan. The, the survey, the climate survey, which is really a survey of the community, how the community feels about the quality of education and a variety of topics, is, is very important for understanding the overall goals of the community and as it relates to what the school board needs to do. So this, the strategic planning exercise along with the survey, the results that we have should set us up very good for understanding the needs and developing a strong strategic plan. So thank you.
Thank you.
So the motion on the floor has been moved and seconded to approve the contract with Joe Schroeder Consulting. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item is the approval of the School Perceptions Contract, which is the, essentially the climate survey that Mr. Palmer referenced and Dr. Tony, Dr. Tony Olson spoke to in her report. I would ask for a motion for its approval.
I move the board approve the proposal for school, with School Perceptions in the amount of $5,150 for the district's community climate survey.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye. Motion carries. The, the next item is the approval of several policy changes. This is the second reading of those changes. We reviewed them at our meeting in September. I would entertain a motion for the approval of those changes and revisions.
If I trip over my tongue, please forgive me. I move the board approve Policy 2266 Title IX Regulations, Policy 7540.02 Web Contact Apps and Services, Policy 754004.04 Staff Technology Acceptable Use and Safety, and Volume 29, Number Two Revisions.
Well done.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye. Motion carries. The next is the approval of Start Now College Application. Dr. Olson, just tell us a little bit what a, what a Start College Now is.
So this, this program has morphed over the years. It seems like every two years, legislature changes it a little bit. So formerly, this was part of youth options. Basically, what it allows students to do in their junior and senior year is to take college classes at the Wisconsin Technical Colleges. Has to be something that we don't currently offer here on site, but it does allow them to start their college career a little earlier, get some of those, I always think the undergrad classes out of the way, but I think it's also a good experience for our juniors and seniors to experience a little bit of what rigor is like in, in college. And I think what we talked about before with, you know, Dawn's got some great experience too, is this year I'm seeing more and more of the Start College Now classes, you know, being held virtually, whereas before, students would go on campus and take these. So once again, it's a great, great experience or a great way for students to get college credit while they're still in high school. It's a good cost savings on, on the student side of things.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion for approval of the applications.
I move the board approve the Start College Now application as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments?
I'll just mention that all Madison College courses for spring semester will also be virtual. So it will be, continue to be a nice array of online classes for students.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, may we please have a, whoop, did I? Whoop. Roll call vote, sorry.
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item, a request for early graduation. It's my understanding that these requests have been reviewed by both the building principal as well as the guidance counselor, and they are all being recommended by them for, for approval. So these students would be graduating in, at the end of the semester in January.
Correct.
So entertain a motion for approval of those requests.
I move the board approve the 11 students for early graduation as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments?
Comments? I went, I went through the, the applications. I was encouraged at the thoughtfulness of the applications. I was encouraged by the, really the complete thought and vision that some of our young students have. It, it's a credit to the engagement of their parents, I think, in a lot of cases that you read. So, yeah, I, again, I'm optimistic about that group of folks and, and their futures.
Other comments, questions? All right, a roll call vote, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the approval of gifts. And again, we are, we are very grateful for a community that supports the school district. And it's pretty amazing. So it is our honor to approve receipt of those gifts. So I'd entertain a motion to do so.
I move the board accept the following gifts and thank the generous donors for the continued support of the students and programs of the Lake Mills Area School District. A donation of $100 to the Rec Department, Recreation Department from Jacob and Lindsay Schaub. A donation of $100 to Student Lunch Accounts from Rachel Davies. A donation of elementary school staff buttons valued at $106.25 from Chris and Deb Gallstead. A donation of school supplies to the elementary school with an estimated value of $500 from the Tyranina's Ladies Club. A donation of $604 to the high school, high school's FFA from Culvers of Lake Mills from Scoops of Thanks Day on September 24th. And $1,000 donation to the rec department's Engineering for Kids Program from Chapter Two.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Comments? Roll call vote, please.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
Andrew Palmer?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert DiPiero?
Aye. Motion carries. The next is to discuss future agenda items.
So I will be working with the principals tomorrow on their school improvement plans. They will present those at the November board meeting. We also have two COVID-related policies that we will bring to you regarding attendance just because taking attendance virtually looks a little different now. And then one technology policy that's been hanging out there. The one thing I was planning on bringing to the November meeting, but I'm still going to continue to hold off, was the COVID-19 district flexibility application for the DPI waiver out of the statutes. Looking, there is no timeline. We just have to do it sometime this year. So far, there hasn't been a big need for that, so I'd rather wait and make sure that we have all of the, the waivers that we need. The only one we're looking at right now is the waiver of minutes of instruction. And quite honestly, because we're in person, we're meeting the minutes of instruction, actually I have Roseanne checking that right now, even with starting four days late because usually you have a buffer for snow days. So I think I'm going to wait till after Christmas until we're really sure about if there's any other statutes that we would need a waiver from possibly. But we're actually in pretty good shape right now just because of the way that we're operating, kind of operating as a normal school year for the most part. And then just as a reminder, the October 26th special meeting is to revise the budget and set the tax levy, and that should be a joyous meeting for taxpayers. We're talking, I think we're at one of the lowest mill rates in the state of Wisconsin, so that's good news for the taxpayers in Lake Mills. So, and that should be a very short, succinct meeting.
Entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much.